I'd like to call it order, this meeting of the Monday County Commission for July 26, 2017. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present. Let's have a moment of silent meditation and place the flag, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renetta, consent and approval, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we have eighty-seven exonerations for eighty-seven thousand, two sixty-one ninety-six. Seven requests to create statements for twenty-one thousand, three nineteen forty-four. Minutes for July 12th and July 19th. Vouchers for General County, three ninety-five, eight ninety-two, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong ones, sorry. Four ninety-five, eight ninety-two, forty-three. Coal severance, five sixty-oh-two. Nine-one-one, two thousand, two seventy-seven-oh-one. Chestnut Ridge Park, two thousand, eight eighty-six, eighty-two. Camp Muffley, six eighty-four, seventy-eight. Mason Dixon Park, one thousand, one oh-three, twenty-three. Reallocated coal, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Accessory valuation, five thousand, five seventy-four, twenty-one. Purchasing card vouchers for General County, ten thousand, eight twenty-four, seventy-five. General School, ten thousand, six oh-five. Nine-one-one, one forty-eight, forty-one. Chestnut Ridge Park, two oh-two, seventy-nine. Camp Muffley, five thirty-nine, oh-one. Mason Dixon Park, thirty-four, fourteen. For voucher total of five thirty-eight, nine fifty-two, sixty. We have budget revisions for, that require state approval for the general county carryover and also law enforcement. Not sure how you all want to handle the general county carryover revision.
Well, let's do that, then do the-
Do you want to do it separately?
Separate. I like to do it separately.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So move for approval of the vouchers as presented?
Okay, couple for the judiciary matters.
Oh, should you want me to second or you want to continue?
No, 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 I've got a couple of-
Okay.
Position vacancies for board and authorities, Western Planning District, Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission, Deckers Creek PSD, Mon County Development Authority and Mon County Building Commission. We have fiduciary orders for July 26, 2017. There's also a request to set a hearing date for a motion to close the estate of Martha Hutt, proposed for August the 2nd at 10:00 a.m. And then we also have statement of services for George Armistead and Cynthia Van Stafford. Okay, that's all the fiduciary, sorry.
Now I'll second.
All right, we've probably moved in second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll go with discussion.
Yes.
Okay. And presentation.
Okay. As you are aware, we have a carryover for General County Fund and we estimated a four-point-five million dollar carryover. Fortunately for us, that actually came in at over ten million dollars. So we have a five million, five hundred and five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollar carryover. So to go line by line, I don't know if you want to go line by line?
I believe that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Let me do the big ticket items and then we can go through the other. We have one point two million dollars in addition to what we had currently budgeted for one, at one million dollars for the courthouse square. Other buildings utilities, fifty thousand dollars. Security and network upgrades for our IT department, four hundred and fifty thousand. Travel and training for the IT and office space, total forty thousand. Contract for GST, fifteen thousand. There was a correction for the Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement Budget of sixty-three thousand, one seventy-seven. We have a bridge construction at Mason Dixon Park and a bridge and road construction at Mason Dixon Park for twenty thousand. Commission Office, second phase for fifteen thousand. Tax Office moved to the third floor, seventy thousand.
One hundred and seventy.
I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy thousand.
That's okay.
County Clerk's Office renovations, one hundred and seventy thousand. We're going to, there's about five hundred thousand dollars left on the radio system at Mecca that we can go ahead and pay off, that's five hundred thousand. We have a hundred and fifty thousand pledged to the DOH, a hundred and fifty thousand for the aquatic center, the proposed aquatic center. And then we have Financial Stabilization Fund, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, four fifty-four, which is what was left over. So we also have an increase in the group health insurance for employees and a cost of living increase for employees as well. The group health insurance, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight forty-five is what the increase would be. And then cost of living increase, four fifty-one, one twenty-four. So the balance is put into contingencies, one million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, thirty-one dollars.
Okay. Move for approval with discussion.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, discussion.
Would you just like to clarify request? I think all three of us were quite excited about the pay increase, how much it is so the people will know what we're recommending. And also clarification about the hundred and fifty thousand with the DOH to put it aside. So if you want to just make a statement on that, thank you.
You all had discussed fifteen hundred dollars for full-time employees, one thousand for part-time employees. And then no, no for any temporary employees. So that, that came up to the four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one twenty-four.
This is a cost of living raise for each and every employee of the county.
Correct.
Yes.
So across the board.
Yes.
And we had requested revised salaries for all the county employees to be sent to the commission and that's what we're approving is those revised.
Exactly.
That's what we're going to table approving is those revised salaries.
Yes.
Let me add something on the group health insurance because that number sounds a little high. There's a couple of things in that number. Excuse me. One, we moved to a high deductible plan option this year. And anybody participating in that high deductible plan, we, we are putting forth the first two thousand dollars to cover. The high deductible plans are two thousand dollars for individual, four thousand dollars for family. So we're covering and of the twenty-five employees that signed up, only one was family. So basically their health insurance deductibles are covered for the year. The other part of that too is it saves us in premiums, so there's a little decrease there. We also voted to eliminate the difference between rates. Previously, there was historical difference built in, employees hired before a certain date paid this amount and employees after paid a higher amount. We've eliminated those and flatlined them, so that's another reason for part of the increase that you're seeing. No, no employee in the county has, has, will see an increase in their premium this year. There are seventy-seven percent or so that will see a decrease in their premium, but we needed to take that step to flatline those rates because as the current healthcare law stands, we could be found in violation for, if somebody wanted to file discriminatory action against us. And then the last part of that is we had about seven, about seven additional people sign up this year that didn't previously have health insurance. So that was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase of that. So that number does seem large, there's a number of different things that were affecting that.
Any other discussions?
Did you, yeah, just, oh, just about that, about just the DOH.
Yeah, the DOH.
Yeah, if you want to just-
After discussions with Don Williams from the DOH District Four Office, you all decided to pledge a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to aid the DOH in certain projects such as ditching and mowing alongside the roads. The process of which roads will be chosen is still under discussion.
Right.
And we'll be having further discussions with him.
Exactly. And I just wanted to clarify, so we're trying, you know, to work together with them and I think all three just want to try that.
He reached out.
Yes.
And I think it's up to us to reach out to them as well and do what we can to, you know.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other discussions?
That was it.
Hearing none. It's been properly moved and seconded for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie's? Next, introduction of new employees. Kat, if you would, please. Good morning, Kat.
Good morning. I am here to introduce Ms. Brenda Bowers. She's our new housekeeper. And she started July the eighteenth. Her pay rate is nine dollars and fifty cents. Additionally, I just wanted to remind everyone that the park's eightieth birthday celebration is this Saturday and I encourage y'all each to come out. It's from twelve to five. If you don't make the fun reunion style part, entertainment is from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And the gentleman's son, who used to run the park for so many years, Mr. Shepherd, has come back and he's going to do entertainment for the evening.
Sadly, I'll be on my family reunion on Saturday, so I will not be in attendance, so please accept my, but I would otherwise be allowed to be there.
I'll do what I can. We're preparing to go on vacation, so-
No, it's fine.
Sorry.
And I'll be in Philly celebrating. My daughter just got a master's degree, I'm sorry.
Hope nothing bad happens in the county this weekend.
Yeah, I move, move for approval.
Second. It's been properly moved in second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have MJ Zing, please. Lamont County Youth Services Center. MJ, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to introduce Beth Tennant. She will be our new crisis worker at the center. She's been in the field for quite a long time and I'm excited to have her on board, so.
Move forward.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. And thank you, and welcome, okay. Sheriff Palmer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Couple new employees.
Thank you.
There's two you all.
Thank you.
One will be from home confinement. Ms. Renetta?
Thank you. I have, first of all, I have Mr. Jesse Coe. And the name sounds familiar. He'll be starting August 1st, so it'll be our fourth Coe as we employ his deputy sheriff. He'll be starting August 1st and has already been accepted to the State Police Academy, which will be August-
Twenty-eighth.
Second employee we have is Tyler Kennedy, who will be a full-time home confinement officer. And he will be, also be starting August 1st. So there's your two new employees.
Move for approval. Second. Properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Do we have any other? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. Open comments from the public, please. Okay. I would like to introduce Mr. Danny Paluga, if you would come forward, Boys and Girls Club. I want the public to be aware of all the good things that the Boys and Girls Club does in our community.
Well, thank you, Ed. I feel like I'm at home with three people that I've known for a long time. I think I've known them all about thirty and Sean about twenty and Ed at least ten or fifteen.
Thank you.
Just some basic background information. First of all, I want to thank the commission for their continued support.
Danny, you come for the podium. We're fancy now.
Well, it's just a little bit easier for picking up what you said.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renetta. I want to thank the commission for its continued generous support over the years. I know that a few years ago, we had a little bit of bump in the road with, you know, limited resources and, but I think, thank you for your continued support of us. The first page that I passed out is just kind of a data sheet of the number of people that we serve and their gender and household incomes and, so during school year, we serve between five hundred and six hundred kids at various sites. We serve students from a large number of schools. We are in four elementary schools. We are at North, Brookhaven, Mountain View and Ridgedale after school. Two of those schools, Mountain View and Ridgedale. We also offer a morning program because parents have to work and, you know, they, if they have to be at work at eight o'clock and school doesn't start till eight-thirty, then it's difficult. So we go there an hour early at both of those schools. We also offer a program at South Middle that the Board of Ed and State Department of Education both support us by providing not only teachers, we employ three teachers after school to help mostly with the academic side. Mostly after school, the programs are, we're there from two to two and a half hours, about an hour of that. We try to help the students with their academic issues and that may be homework, maybe at the middle schools, they may be working at, on a project or a term paper, things like that. So truthfully, at the middle school, most of their issues revolve around math, algebra, things such as that. This year, we'll be adding two schools. State Department of Education funded us to begin operation of an after-school program at University High. We'll be out there four days a week from probably right after Labor Day until Memorial Day. And then also, we're, Board of Ed asked us to help them start a program over at Myland Park Elementary, so we'll be over there probably, probably the first day of school. Generally, our programs, except for South, and our elementary programs start the very first day of school. Our summer program, we have two hundred and eighty-three kids enrolled. You can see that what their annual household incomes are and break, broken down by race. The pages after that list some of the programs that we offer. For example, the career launch program, that, that's a program for middle school and high school kids. We try to get them to begin to focus. There's a lot of stuff online you can look at and here's careers, but a lot of times there needs to be that face-to-face communication. A lot, a lot of kids don't have those communications with people at home or even people at school to talk about what do they want to do. A lot of times they just float, you know, until they finish high school, then it's time to wake up. And what we try to do is get with them early on, start having them think about what they would like to do, look at careers. For example, this summer, we, every summer we go to colleges, we take field visits. This year, we went to Wheeling Jesuit, went to Duquesne. We always go to WVU, went to Waynesburg. I think this week or next week, we go down to Fairmont, Fairmont University. So, and we try to expose them to, to different kinds of colleges. They all know WVU because they're around it, but they don't know the smaller schools, different communities. One year, we actually went over to Shepherd and Howard Universities, spent the night over in that area. We thought that was a good exposure. One of our part-time summer employees was dead-set on WVU until he visited Wheeling Jesuit and now he's a Wheeling Jesuit student and comes back to us in the summer. Smart moves program, that's basically a prevention program, trying to keep kids focused on prevention things, you know, drugs, alcohol, things that have a tendency to get them in trouble. We're fortunate this summer, for example, that Danny Trejo and his group, they get a little slow in the summer, work-wise, so they, they come up to us on Fridays. So we have a nice partnership with Danny. They come up and talk to our, our teens, you know, they, you know, just sit around, talk to them, counsel them a little bit. They're also going to be coming up to, we've talked to them about coming up to University High in, in the fall. That way they'll be able to have, you know, a, a good clientele that, you know, they do that counseling better than I do. So, you know, why, why not have somebody that knows a little bit more about it on deck? We also try to get our kids to give back to the community. That's, we have a culture. One of the things is personal responsibility, pursuit of excellence. And one, one of the other ones is respect for your community. And so we, we try to get our teens especially to give back to the community. They've, they've done a lot of things with Friends of Deckers Creek this summer. They've, they've worked on cleaning, you know, pulling crap out of the creek, but also at Marilla Park. I think it's next week, I'm, I'm not sure when the fair is, but we've talked to the fair people and they're going to be over there two days during the day before the fair, you know, in the afternoon, picking up litter, you know, doing kind of odd things that kind of helps the fair, but also gives them the opportunity to kind of give back to the community. You know, sooner or later, all of us are going to be moving on and if we, we don't educate the younger kids that they have a responsibility to their community, then, you know, it's, it's got to start young. They have to realize that this is their community, it's, it's not Sean's, Ed and Tom's. It's, it's going to be theirs, so they need to start thinking about their community and responding in a proper way. We, we, as I said, we, we serve a number of groups out of, out of our Woodburn site in addition to the school site. We have two vans. We go to Cheat Lake Elementary, Trinity, St. Francis and Mount near Middle after school to pick kids up and bring them to club site. There's, there's school buses to go there, but can't get there from Cheat Lake or Trinity or, or St. Francis, so we, we send vans out to pick those up. But schools like Westwood and North and Eastwood and Mountain View and Morgantown High and even South, there's buses that kind of run past and they, they drop the kids off at, at our club site. So that, that's kind of it. I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions you want. This is a kind of a comprehensive list of all the programs that, that we offer. They're age-appropriate, you know, certainly, for example, the learning strategies and study skills. We have somebody that tries to get the middle school and the high school kids to learn how to study. You know, some of our college students who are there, they said, gee, I wish I'd have had that when I was younger, I'd have done much better in, in college to, just to learn how to study. So that, that's it. I don't know if you have any questions? Be happy to answer, invite you up anytime you want to stop by, you know. I think, you know, I've had conversations with the three of you over the years about what we do. Tom's son used to work for us at, at Mountain View Elementary for a couple of years, maybe?
About three and a half years. He still goes back.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think he enjoyed it.
Yes.
I know the kids enjoyed him. And usually, truthfully, a lot of times, the, the college students and the adults that work for us get as much out of it as the little kids get out of it, so.
I, I think we would welcome an invitation to, you know, to be there at some time.
Yeah, anytime you want. We're going to have, we're going to have, this is our twentieth year, our twentieth anniversary. I think we're going to have probably three or four events during the year and we'll invite you to-
Thank you.
To all four of them. Some of them may be just breakfast, some of them would be up at the club. The city's doing some extra work up there this year.
Right.
We have some money from Lowe's that we're going to be doing some, some improvements at the Woodburn site.
Okay. I appreciate it, Danny. It sounds like you, I know you guys do a lot with a little and-
Yeah, let me just quickly tell you some of the things. We try to expose kids to things they might not normally get to do. And so let, let me read some of the field trips that we take. Each group takes one field trip a week. So the yellow group, the youngest kids, this year they went to Carnegie Science, Pittsburgh Aviary, Laurel Caverns, Pittsburgh Zoo, the Children's Museum in Pittsburgh, Idowell Park. The oldest group, the teens, we did a, a two-day at Chestnut Ridge Park, rented Claire Cabin. And then we also went to the zip line and the team building thing at WVU Adventure School. They all, they went to Pittsburgh Zoo, Carnegie Science, then they went to Wheeling Jesuit, Duquesne. They went Sandcastle. And this week, they're going to the Wavtech Pool at Fairmont State and then they're going to the county fair also. So in the, in the middle-aged groups, they also have those kind of things.
I, I forgot or I just didn't realize you did the career launch program and, you know, I still meet with students and I wrote a hundred and twenty-page book that is the process of the proper way of looking for a college, financial aid and parents. I'd be more than willing to give it to you so you all could use it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I did not realize it. That's great. I'm glad it will be used.
And I'll, I'll be happy to discuss being a floater, you know, the guy, the guy who selected physics that thought he was going to be a NASA engineer and discovered that-
He had no aptitude whatsoever and switched English literature and finally became a dentist. So I have floated, so perhaps if you need a floater-
Yes.
-to, to educate these youth, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, truthfully, all of our kids under the age of twelve think they're going to play in the NBA.
Right.
I understand.
So they, they have a career adjustment to make, but, so we, we just try to expose them to different things they may not have thought about. We bought, for example, bought a bunch of robotic things. We bought a telescope this year, a big, one of the big ones. We try to just expose them to planets and Saturn and places like that. We bought three drones and, you know, kids get on those iPads, they fly that thing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, one, I walked in one day and a kid brought that drone over to my face and, so, you know, just something to, to get them interested in whatever it is, just so they're interested in something rather than just floating along until they're eighteen and then they don't know what they're doing. If you can tweak their mind a little bit, whatever it is, and it can be anything. It doesn't have to be college education, it can be, you know, that's, that's why we like to go to Fairmont because they have a lot of good two-year programs down there and, and the smaller schools, so.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any more comments from the public? We'll keep it open. If not, we'll close comments from the public. Call in, do you have any grants?
I do not have any.
All right. We'll move on then to the town grant bill and a presentation of the application for annexation. Ron, you're on.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
I should probably be using each one of these.
Okay.
Tom, do you still have your book?
I think you gave, you asked me to give it back to you.
And I'll just give you that.
Okay, that's fine.
That was kind of a spare.
Okay.
Thank you.
Listen, you were here when we did this last time.
No, I think you had already submitted the application. I think we're, we set the public meeting and then-
Right. Well, it's basically the same application. Nothing's changed. Cover later's changed. We had, we still met the seven criteria set forth by the state to annex by minor boundary adjustment. There was some questions and this is why this was tabled about the maps.
Yep.
We had Batista prepare and certify the meets and bounds for this area. Everything is, should be good, good to go. Again, nothing has changed.
Okay. And again, being a new guy, this, and first time through the process, I believe the next step is for us to table a motion to accept your application and then we review it and then at the next meeting, just, you know, move, move forward.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the application?
Yes. Second, on the basis that, yeah, we accept the application.
For review.
For review, yes.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second to accept this application for review, all in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Expression of interest regarding design and engineering services for Camp Muffley Pool. What do we have, Renetta? What do we have, Renata?
I'd like, yeah, Tom, if you want.
Yeah, I just want to say we have.
Yes, since we have two. What disconcerns is that we were given a grant by the Hazel Ruby McQueen Foundation of 25,000, and it was thought that the best thing we could do with this money was to be prepared and to have a proper design ready in case the funding would come through to replace the pool at Camp Muffley.
And I have one from Alpha Architects Engineering.
And I have an application from Thrasher.
All righty, good. So we have two expressions of interest. I would say then our next step would be to go ahead and have a.
Work session to review.
A work session to review it, yeah. That, that would be fun, so.
To accept the proposals and to do this, review it at a work session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept and review at work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Correspondents, do we have any, Renata?
Just one piece that came in on Monday. It is from a company called SWN Production Company. They are required by the DEP to send a copy of their maintenance plan, monitoring and emergency action plan for the listed freshwater impoundments, which is Reliance Minerals A freshwater impoundment and Reliance Minerals B freshwater impoundment. We will have this on file for review for the public if they so choose.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All righty. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move to any new business. Hearing none, reports from elected officials. Do we have any? Sheriff Palmer.
Just real quick. I'd just like, on behalf of the employees, the Morgana County Sheriff's Department, we'd like to thank you all for the cost of living raise. As you all know, our people work very hard, and it's nice when they can get rewarded. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate the thank you, okay? Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll report from county commissioners. Tom?
First, again, tomorrow, Clinton Fire Hall is the Mount near food and pantry plus more giveaway from 11 to 1:00. And the other thing is that, I'll read this because I wrote it out, be careful what I say. I'm requesting that we place on the agenda next week a FOIA request for the State Tax Department to get the questions answered about our alcohol tax concerns. For the state not to even acknowledge our letters is not acceptable to me, and we need to move forward. This issue is a microcosm of a bigger problem at the State Tax Department. They need to be working with every county in a collaboration mode. I would like an answer to why the county's overall alcohol tax reimbursement is down $500,000 or more for the last five years. I believe the citizens of Morgana County deserve an answer to how this county could go for six months during the football season and receive $0 in alcohol taxes. I would also like to request at this time, when we do this, that we also send a letter to the governor to explain our concerns and why we're doing it. So I'm going to request that to be put on the agenda.
I support that.
Thank you.
I do, too.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Sean?
Yes, I do echo your sentiments, Tom. I'm kind of frustrated that we send a letter and they just ignore it. Multiple letters, so.
Multiple, that's right.
Last week, last Wednesday, we had our community leaders forum meeting, and Granville hosted. Thank you, Ron and Mayor Lewis, for, for hosting. It was a wonderful event. Last Saturday, I went, I observed the drill that our health department coordinated.
Simulation, yes.
Yes. There were National Guard, Department of Corrections, FBI, I mean, there was just all kinds of individuals there, and it was, it was pretty interesting to watch how they all interact, and it was a great event, and they pretty much got it in before the weather, before the rain started, so. We've had a number of internal meetings for different things, like last week, we had our police pre-conference bid, which was, it was about two and a half hours long. I appreciate Sheriff Palmer and his crew, and Bobby and Renata for participating. I didn't know it was going to be that long, but we hammered out a lot of details in regards to that RFP. Tomorrow is another pact, in addition to the food giveaway, Tom. Those things always seem to happen on health department meetings. They mean every two months, but I have a health department meeting at 10:00 in the morning, and then we have the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership meeting at noon, and then in the evening, we have our MMPO meeting, so it'll be a busy day. And then next week, I'll be on vacation, so kind of sprinting to the finish line so that we can go and enjoy a, enjoy a vacation a week with the family.
Ken?
As I said, going last, sometimes I don't get to say as much, but Friday, I did go to Mason Dixon School. I read the Lorax to the Energy Express kids that were there. Mr. Smith, Jimmy, did, of 911 director, did report that the simulation was really, you know, quite an event. Monday was 4-H camp board meeting. Remind everybody, Easton Hill, where I live, closes at midnight on the 28th. That's this Friday, okay? So you won't be able to go through there anymore. And on Monday is the fair parade, Morgana County Fair, and the, the fair then will open up on Tuesday night at Mylan Park, okay? So everybody, please come out to the fair and join us. It's, it's grown immensely each and every year, and we look forward to welcoming you there.
And this week is the Patel District Fair?
Yes, it's going on right now.
Right.
And.
And, yes, Halik starts, yes, tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move for adjourn?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you.